Do I need to bring him in?
Yes.
Who's back there, Chris? Chris? Hey, Chris? Do I need to bring in the two-three-six-four number?
Yes, yes.
Bye.
You are now joining the meeting.
All right. Can everybody hear us?
This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
Brian, can he hear us?
I can hear you.
Great. Okay, fantastic. I think, um, I think we're good to go. I think we have a quorum. Um, and we may have, um, the only person I didn't see was, uh, Joseph Murphy. Joseph, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Okay, we're good to go then, Brian.
Okay. I will call to order the August tenth, two thousand twenty, uh, meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission, um, make sure we've got, we have a quorum, so we will begin with approval of the agenda. Commissioners, you have the, uh, agenda in front of you and available to you. Are there any additions or, uh, revisions to be made to the current agenda? Hearing none, Commissioner Freeman, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda for tonight.
Uh, Commissioner Riddell, do you have a second? Think you're still on mute. Make sure you're not muted when you try and speak.
I'm not now.
Okay.
My internet's out. Sorry. It's back now. I don't know what I would be seconding, so no, I don't have a second.
Okay. It's the agenda, but, um, does anyone have a second? Commissioner Gray, I have you on video here. Do you have a second?
I second the motion.
We got a second. Um, Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
With that, the July, I vote yes as well, the July thirteenth, there's more of it. July thirteenth, uh, minutes, uh, are approved, um, with having those staff, Ben, is there a staff report of any kind?
Yeah, I would just like, I would just like to make a, a mention that, um, I'm happy to introduce, although you can't see him at the moment unless he starts talking, but, uh, our new planner started with us, Robert Baxter, uh, who, um, who's actually been living here in Oxford for, uh, for a few years. He worked at, uh, Slaughter and Associates, um, uh, but was, uh, lived in actually Memphis. So, we're really excited to have him here, uh, with us. Um, I think you'll enjoy working with him, and, um, I will tell you that he's going to be handling the, uh, the last case of the evening. So, uh, so he's got some big pressure to get us out of here on time.
Well, I'll make sure of that.
(laughing)
Cause consent agenda is three cases. It's case number two-six-four-three on behalf of specialty orthopedic, uh, with a front yard build-to-line, uh, special exception. Uh, two-six-four-six is University Shopping Center on behalf of Origin Bank. It's a special exception regarding, um, banks, neighborhood, traditional neighborhood business banks and credit unions. Uh, also, the last case on the consent agenda is two-six-four-eight. It's Blackburn Holding LLC. It's a, um, special exception for a, also a special exception for a front yard build-to-line. Um, having looked at those commissioners, is there any need or desire to pull either, or, or any of the three cases out of consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have not, I have not heard anything from, uh, from any, uh, any residents, uh, although I did hear from somebody asking why, uh, one of the cases was on the consent agenda, and I explained it to him. So, you may just want to check and see if there's anybody joining us that would like to, to discuss one of the cases.
That was next. Is there anyone here that's online, um, attending the meeting virtually that has any objections to, uh, the three cases which are located on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept, uh, a motion, um, Commissioner Gray, I, I'll turn to you again, uh, for a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll move.
Commissioner King, do you have a second?
Yes, I'd like to second the motion.
All right, I got a, um, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Who else am I missing?
I think JR's on the phone.
Oh, yeah, I see. I see. Uh, Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Anyone, am I, I didn't, that's the only commissioners I see here.
That's all I see.
Okay. All right, um, I vote yes as well, so the, uh, the agenda is approved as far as the minutes of the July thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any changes to those, um, or revisions that need to be made before we submit a motion for approval? All right, hearing none, uh, Commissioner Gray, do you have a, a motion to approve July thirteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
Yes.
All right, I got a motion. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I, uh, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda passes, which now brings us to public hearing, which of course, two-six-four-one is the City of Oxford. They have postponed, um, that hearing, so we will move forward with two-six-four-four. It's SOG Realty on behalf of Specialty Orthopedics, and it's a request from variance, uh, from section three-point-nine, point, one-point-three medical facilities. It's regarding parking issue at Oxford Way. Uh, who's got this, Ben?
I do. Thank you. Uh, this property, it's located on the south side of Oxford Way, and, uh, the property's, uh, and it's really, it's near, uh, South Lamar and the South Lamar intersection of Oxford Way. Uh, the property's currently undeveloped. It measures about three and a half acres in its own suburban corridor. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct a medical office building, uh, which they believe will be done in two phases. Um, the, uh, the initial phase will consist of about twenty-seven thousand square feet of, uh, office building, and it will be on two stories. Uh, phase two will add an additional sixteen thousand five hundred square feet, um, and that, that addition will be on the west side of phase one. Uh, the building in total will come, consist of forty-three thousand five hundred square feet. The proposal is also, or was the subject of case twenty-six forty-three, which was just approved on the consent agenda for a bill-two line. Um, and I do want to note that we have not received any site plans at this point, um, but this is the, the beginning stages of them, uh, moving in that direction. So, in this instance, the applicant's requesting a variance from the parking standards. Phase one will, uh, as I mentioned, will consist of twenty-seven thousand square feet, and it requires a hundred and eight parking stalls, but the development is also allowed to exceed its, uh, its, uh, parking, minimum required parking by twenty-five percent, and in, in this instance, it's about an additional twenty-seven stalls. However, the applicant is proposing, um, with this phase, a total of a hundred and seventy parking spaces, which, uh, is about just under sixty percent, um, uh, more parking than what that minimum requirement is. Um, the application, it indicates that, um, uh, this medical office will have, uh, and I, and I did inquire with, uh, with the applicant's engineer, Joey Moore, uh, they say that they're going to have a hundred and three employees that will work at this location, and that is with phase one. So, based on the, uh, their other locations, uh, which are similar to this, uh, this facility in size, they anticipate about a hundred and seventy-two patients per day in this facility. And while, as we all know, these patients, uh, patients will not be visiting at the same time, we've all been in the lobbies of these medical offices where, um, where there, there's quite a number of patients that are inside the waiting room, the lobby, uh, and then also inside the, um, the waiting rooms. Um, I do think it's important to note that, um, uh, when phase two is taken into consideration, the whole forty-three thousand five hundred square feet, the parking as indicated on this plan suggests two-hundred-and-thirty-one stalls, and that's about thirty-five percent more than the minimum required parking, so it's, it's actually just above what, uh, what we would ordinarily allow, uh, for, for a parking maximum. Um, the applicant is proposing a healthy landscaping screen along Oxford Way that will help soften the view of multiple rows of parking, and as a condition of approval in case twenty-six forty-three, staff required additional landscaping on the south side of the fence along Oxford Way, and the landscaping is intended to wrap around the entrances, um, to help shield that view from both South Lamar and Oxford Way. Uh, when considering the intensity of the use with both phases, we do, uh, we do, do believe that the intensive demand for parking can be considered a hardship, and therefore, staff recommends approval with the variance, uh, of the variance, uh, with the stated condition. And Joey Moore is on the line in case you do have any questions for him.
Any questions for Joey, or any questions for the, um, planning staff? All right, hearing none, any questions, um, for anyone who may be out there, um, virtually attending the meeting who wish to speak on the request by specialty orthopedic group? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, pardon me, I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance. Uh, Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of item twenty-six forty-four.
I have a motion to approve, uh, Commissioner King, is there a second?
Yes, second the motion.
I have a, m- motion, a second. Commissioner Freeman, do you have, um, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
I may have missed it, but is this, uh, is this subject to staff recommendations or without?
It's, the only recommendation, uh, on the request was that it, the variance be, uh, granted for, uh, as the plan is submitted, and that will be in the, uh, that's what you're approving, yes?
Yes.
All right, thank, although yes as well, uh, variance is approved.
Thank you.
Excuse me one moment. Okay, sorry. All right, now, um, that brings us to case number two-six-four-five. It's a variance from, uh, the section five buffers for property located two-six-one-nine Jackson Avenue West.
Consent agenda is three cases. It's case number 2643 on behalf of specialty orthopedic with a front yard build to line, special exception. 2646 is University Shopping Center on behalf of Origin Bank. It's a special exception regarding banks, neighborhood, traditional neighborhood, business banks and credit unions. Also, the last case on the consent agenda is 2648. It's Blackburn Holding LLC. It's a special exception for a, also a special exception for a front yard build to line. Having looked at those commissioners, is there any need or desire to pull either or any of the three cases out of consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have not heard anything from any residents, although I did hear from somebody asking why one of the cases was on the consent agenda, and I explained it to them. So you may just want to check and see if there's anybody joining us that would like to discuss one of the cases.
That was next. Is there anyone here that's online, attending the meeting virtually, that has any objections to the three cases which are located on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion. Commissioner Gray, I'll turn to you again for a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll move.
Commissioner King, do you have a second?
Yes, I'd like to second the motion.
All right, I got a, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda passes, which now brings us to public hearing, which of course 2641 is the City of Oxford. They have postponed that hearing. So we will move forward with 2644. It's SOG Realty on behalf of Specialty Orthopedics. And it's a request for variance from section 3.9, 1.3 medical facilities. It's regarding parking issue at Oxford Way. Who's got this, Ben?
I do, thank you. This property, it's located on the south side of Oxford Way. And the property's, and it's really, it's near South Lamar and the South Lamar intersection of Oxford Way. The property is currently undeveloped. It measures about three and a half acres in its own suburban corridor. The applicant is proposing to construct a medical office building, which they believe will be done in two phases. The initial phase will consist of about 27,000 square feet of office building, and it will be on two stories. Phase two will add an additional 16,500 square feet. And that additional will be on the west side of phase one. The building in total will consist of 43,500 square feet. The proposal is also, or was the subject of case 2643, which was just approved on the consent agenda for a bill two line. And I do want to note that we have not received any site plans at this point, but this is the beginning stages of them moving in that direction. So in this instance, the applicant's requesting a variance from the parking standards. Phase one, as I mentioned, will consist of 27,000 square feet, and it requires 108 parking stalls. But the development is also allowed to exceed its parking, minimum required parking by 25%. And in this instance, it's about an additional 27 stalls. However, the applicant is proposing with this phase, a total of 170 parking spaces, which is about just under 60% more parking than what that minimum requirement is. The application, it indicates that this medical office will have, and I did inquire with the applicant's engineer, Joey Moore, they say that they're going to have 103 employees that will work at this location, and that is with phase one. So based on their other locations, which are similar to this facility in size, they anticipate about 172 patients per day in this facility. And while, as we all know, these patients will not be visiting at the same time. We've all been in the lobbies of these medical offices where there's quite a number of patients that are inside the waiting room, the lobby, and then also inside the waiting rooms. I do think it's important to note that when phase two is taken into consideration, the whole 43,500 square feet, the parking, as indicated on this plan, suggests 231 stalls. And that's about 35% more than the minimum required parking. So it's actually just above what we would ordinarily allow for a parking maximum. The applicant is proposing a healthy landscaping screen along Oxford Way that will help soften the view of multiple rows of parking. And as a condition of approval in case 2643, staff required additional landscaping on the south side of the fence along Oxford Way. And the landscaping is intended to wrap around the entrances to help shield that view from both South Lamar and Oxford Way. When considering the intensity of the use with both phases, we do believe that the intensive demand for parking can be considered a hardship. And therefore, staff recommends approval with the variance, of the variance with the stated condition. And Joey Moore is on the line, in case you do have any questions for him.
Any questions for Joey, or any questions for the planning staff? All right, hearing none, any questions for anyone who may be out there virtually attending the meeting who wish to speak on the request by specialty orthopedic group? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, pardon me. I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of item 2644.
I have a motion to approve. Commissioner King, is there a second?
Yes, second the motion.
I have a motion, a second. Commissioner Freeman, do you have, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
I may have missed it, but is this, is this subject to staff recommendations or?
The only recommendation on the request was that it, the variance be granted for, as the plan has submitted, and that will be in the, that's what you're approving, yes?
Yes.
All right, although yes as well, variance is approved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one moment. Okay, sorry. All right, now that brings us to case number 2645. It's a variance from the section five buffers for profit located 2619 Jackson Avenue West. Ben, who's got it?
I've got that one.
You got floor, Gray.
Yes. So this request pertains to a portion of Oxford Gallery at Two Shopping Center that borders Tubby Tubby, Tubby Tubby Creek. The applicant is requesting a modification to two buildings in the northeast portion of the site. Building K, which has not been constructed, and building L, which currently has Oxford Nutrition and K Jewelers as tenants. The applicant states in their memo that the COVID-19 pandemic has changed the commercial building demands, and they would like to add pickup lanes to building K and building L. The proposed building K footprint will be reduced in size from what was previously approved in 2014. And a rear pickup lane will be added around the west and north sides of building K. Currently, there are 16 parking spaces intended for building K and building L. With the revision, there will be a loss of four spaces. Prior to receiving a site plan amendment for this change to the site plan, a variance is being requested because this portion of the shopping center with these proposals borders Tubby Tubby Creek and is within a required 50-foot buffer and is designated a blue line stream. The proposed modifications to buildings K and L and the proposed drive-through pickup lanes will not encroach any further into the buffer than previously approved. As I mentioned, in 2014, the planning commission approved a site plan approval for Gallery Two consisting of 15 buildings. And one of the conditions of approval was approval and acceptance of the flood insurance rate map letter of revision issued by FEMA. Understanding the current limitations to accessing commercial buildings and acknowledging that the drive-through lane will not encroach any further into the blue line stream buffer than what was previously approved, staff recommends approval of the variance from section 5.7, 6.2, with the one condition that the variance is for the site plan is submitted.
Thank you, Gray. Any questions for the staff or the engineering? I assume Joey is here on that as well.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for either the engineer or, or planning staff?
This is Mr. Chairman, I just had a question.
Bill, Commissioner Freeman, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt somebody. I wasn't clear, is this Tubby Tubby Creek or is this Goose Creek? It's shown on the drawing, not that it matters, but there's a creek back there.
Staff calls it, it is Goose Creek, Bill.
Yeah, I think it is Goose Creek.
For some reason on Google, it's showing Tubby Tubby Creek too.
It actually has two names. I think once it gets back here north of Woodline, they start calling it Tubby Tubby. So, but yeah.
Commissioner Gray, do you have a question?
Yes, I did have a quick question. That line in the code that says unless a permit for modifying, filling, piping, for rerouting, Jeff, is that applicable right here? Is that something that y'all are going to have to guess? Is it, no, it is, is it Jeff or Joey? I guess Joey's answering the question.
It's Joey. We're actually not, everything that we've done prior to this, when we looked at Lomar and the study and everything, gave us the right to build to this line where we're building to. So what, all we're really doing is we're taking that same footprint, that same location, and we're reducing the building depth to put that, be able to fit that drive in there. So we're not encroaching any further closer to the creek than we would have. So as far as what me and Jeff talked about it, I don't think there's going to be any additional requirements from FEMA since we've got to Lomar and we've done the flood study and all that stuff. So either, you know, either way, I guess we could build to that line that we're proposing, whether we do the site plan, plan change, or we keep going.
Yeah, I understand that we can build to the line. I guess my, and maybe this is the question for Ben or Paul. When it says on that section of the code, a 50-foot buffer to include the applicable setback requirement is required, yada, 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 and then it goes through all of that stuff, or any blue line stream unless a permit for modifying, filling, piping, for rerouting has been obtained. So am I reading that, that there has to be that 50-foot buffer unless we have that permit?
Duncan, I thought that that was, that was included.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, I thought that that was, that that was applicable in this situation. Hang on one second, I'm trying to pull up that provision of the code, give me one second.
That's how I read it, that that is applicable as well, that we're going to have to have a permit.
Duncan, I think that the, so I think that the variance is required because I don't think anything's being modified in this instance. So I think this variance is needed, so, which is why we proceeded with it.
No, I understand that the variance is needed. Maybe I'm misreading that part of the code where it talks about, you see in Joey's letter right there where it says unless a permit? Okay, so that's just what I want clarification on. They're not going to need to get a permit from?
From FEMA or the Corps?
From FEMA or the Corps, yeah.
Hey Duncan, it's Paul. As I read that provision, the permit is only needed if you are both planning to and are being approved to make a modification as opposed to starting to encroach on it. So that if you go out and FEMA tells you you can reroute the stream, you don't need to worry about getting a buffer because you're obviously doing something that, that buffer space is going to be meaningless at that point. Ben, you think that's right?
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
Okay. All right, that's all I wanted to clarity on.
Thanks, anyone else?
Yeah, Joseph Murphy, quick question here. I don't think it's too big of a deal. I just need some clarification on the six-foot minimum sidewalk on the front. I understand, I see the building was moved a little closer there. Is that all within code here, this, this minimum sidewalk that we have is six-foot? Is that, what I see over here, I guess was a building K. It seems to obviously be a bigger, but is six-foot the minimum? Is that what we have on the front?
So, hey Joseph, this has been, you know, this variance is going to grant them, you know, the ability to do what they're proposing to, but they'll still have to modify the site plan, and they'll come forward with a site plan that actually indicates that sidewalk width to make sure that it meets all those requirements.
Okay, I understand. We were just, we're moving from the creek, and I just was trying to do the math, and of course it didn't add up. And then I understood, I said, well, okay, I see the math problem was actually, the whole building was moved over, not, not just decreased. And that was, I guess, the heart of my question. So if we're going to deal with that later, understood.
Thank you all. Any additional questions? Anyone here tonight wishes to have questions or voice an opinion on the request for variance? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the request for variance. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of item 2645.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Gray, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The variance is approved. This now brings us to case number 2647. It's University Shopping Center LLC on behalf of Origin Bank. And it's a site plan approval for Origin Bank. The property will be located at 1715 University Avenue. Who's got that, Ben?
Hey Brian, I've got that one as well.
All right, Gray.
The subject property is approximately a third of an acre and is located on the north side of University Avenue, east of Autozone and west of the UPS store. It is referred to as Lot One in the University Shopping Center. Currently, Guest Realty and Oxford SuperTan share a building on that property that will be demolished to make way for a 5,400-square-foot Origin Bank branch. The applicant is proposing a two-story building that will have two drive-through lanes that will span the north and west sides of the lot. A special exception was just granted in the consent agenda for two drive-through lanes. And Origin Bank received a front yard build-to-line maximum variance at the July 2020 planning commission meeting. The drive-through lanes will be accessed within University Shopping Center on the north side of the property, not at a point of ingress egress with University Avenue. The drive-throughs will largely be screened by the proposed building. Site plan review comments, highlights from the report. Under the use requirements, there are 13 parking spaces allocated for the bank, and 18 are required by code. But a shared parking agreement will be in place between Origin Bank and the existing University Shopping Center, which will create a total of 18 parking spaces available. Other highlights, the applicant has confirmed that the existing pole sign on the lot will be removed. They will come back through planning, through the planning department for signage approval at a later date. In the landscaping and tree requirements, the proposed landscape design meets all standards. There was discussion early on about, or throughout the site plan review process, about the street trees, the frontage trees. The original site plan indicated that sidewalks be located, be low in relation to sidewalks and frontage trees, excuse me. The original site plan indicated the sidewalks to be located at the back of the city right-of-way as required by staff. And that has been in place for a number of years along house. Frontage trees would be handled and sidewalks. However, this and the reconstruct, reconstruction of the access points for the bank would have resulted in the removal of three trees located on the city right-of-way. These trees were planted after University Avenue was widened in this area approximately 12 years ago. The tree board expressed concern about the loss of three street trees at their June meeting. After hearing these concerns, the design engineers changed the sidewalk layout to leave the sidewalk in place at the location of the trees and provide for a meandering sidewalk along the frontage of the commercial center. The design provided does still require the removal of one tree from the right-of-way due to the relocation of the site access point. The tree board considered the revised design at their regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, August 6, and voted to approve the design with the preservation of the two city street trees and the removal of the existing white oak. Under engineering comments, Rihanna has written substantially about the traffic impact. Staff did not understand that the bank was proposed to be two stories in the initial conversations in the Zoom meeting conducted to discuss the site plan prior to the site submittal. A traffic impact study is required to evaluate the impact of site traffic on the adjacent streets and traffic flow and to determine if additional measures are required to mitigate these impacts. In stormwater, the original commercial development has no stormwater management facility and predates the city's stormwater ordinance. This project will provide stormwater management for the area of disturbance. The facility will consist of an underground detention system that will discharge to the city's existing drainage pipes within the University Avenue right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of the site plan for Origin Bank with the following conditions. One, approvals for the site plan is submitted. Two, a full set of updated civil drawings be submitted to the planning department before permitting. Late this afternoon, we did receive an update from Precision Engineering that appears to be that we can wrap up that condition fairly quickly. Three, engineering requires easements be provided for stormwater, water and sewer prior to the sale of the water and sewer taps or building permits. Four, the changes to the access points for both Origin Bank and the existing commercial center must be constructed and completed as required by engineering staff prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Five, additional stormwater details need to be worked out with, within the final submittal. And another, six is an additional condition from engineering to show a trash rack for the nine-inch diameter orifice. And I want to propose an additional condition and see if Rihanna agrees about a traffic impact study that that be approved by engineering before any kind of permitting? And so those are the seven conditions that we propose.
So I will go ahead and speak before the conversation. I do not feel that for the bank at this point, I don't feel like the traffic impact study is going to produce anything. And as the development goes on, as they redevelop, that's when we'll look at more of traffic. So I would not, I am not proposing to require a traffic impact study. The board can choose differently as they see fit, but I don't believe that the study is going to produce anything other than controlling access at this point, given the bank size and its location.
Thank you, Rihanna. Anything further, Gray?
No, sir, I know Paul's on the line, if you have any, Paul Cachanina's on the line.
I have a question. And it's generally, the site plan, and I may be looking more to the future. It shows the curbing around the UPS store. Is that this site plan? Are they going to do that and include that parking in for their bank? Or is it just going to be done at a later date?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is Paul Cachanina. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you, Paul.
Okay, so, yes, so all the improvements that you see there on that site plan, those are proposed to be part, to be completed as part of the bank construction, which includes cleaning up all of the access points along University Avenue. I think there are currently four. We're going to reduce that down to two, which is kind of what Rihanna's speaking to. I mean, even in light of a traffic impact study, I think the end result would have been essentially recommending what we're doing here, which is reducing the number of access points, pushing those as far away from the intersection as possible. And that's, that's exactly what we're planning to do as part of the bank construction. So that would include reconfiguring the drive-through lane around UPS store and the east and west travel lane just in front of the UPS store, trying to make that so it's not such as a kind of a mess of a conflict it is right now.
Right, okay, great, thanks. Okay, any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Freeman. I'm not clear, so is there a staff recommendation number seven, or isn't there?
There will not be, per Rihanna's answer, yes, sir. So it'll be the six conditions stated in the report.
Thank you, this is JR. Can I just ask Rihanna, is there a reason not to require the study if it's triggered by the code?
Oh, hold on, JR, can you repeat that again?
Yes, I was just asking, is there a reason not to require the study if it's triggered by the code based on the site plan?
Well, the fact that I discovered it, honestly, the fact that I discovered it, I guess 10 days ago, the Friday before last, it's part of it, the other part of it is that in evaluating the site myself, the traffic impact study, I feel like there's not anything that it's going to state regarding the bank itself. Because the bank is situated, I went into this some in our report, but because the bank- but because the bank is, is the way it's located relative to the signal, left turns are going to be where the issue is from. And the bank itself, there's no property that the bank has that's going to, where they would be able to do anything. So if there was ever anything that would be required, it could be an additional turn lane. But that's not something that Origin is going to have property to do. So I think that if you require a study, what it's going to say is there's benefit in controlling access and closing up those driveways, which we've already done, and keeping the driveway further from the signal, which is also what we've already done. So it was a, it was a mistake on my part to not have it required. But I don't think at this point that, other than by the street letter of the ordinance, that it, you know, it's required. It's not going to, I don't think it's going to produce anything.
Right, and this is Paul Casonina. I mean, to that point, I mean, the code actually reads that the city engineer has the discretion to require a traffic impact study whether it's triggered or not. So even in the event that a project is not triggered, the threshold for a traffic impact study, Rihanna has the ability to make us do it, or if she thinks that we've satisfied those requirements in another way, that she does not have to make us do the traffic study, even if it technically triggers that warrant. And we've had discussions with Rihanna in coordination through this process and really feel that, you know, what we're doing here is about as good a solution as we can, as we can do with the property, the bank controls, and with cleaning up those driveways as we're planning to do. But all that being said, we're happy to further discuss with Rihanna. And even if this project alone, you know, warrants additional discussion, we're happy to do that. But I think I agree with Rihanna that really the bigger picture, when the bulk of this center is redeveloped, is probably the time to consider that more closely.
Thank you, both.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the current request under the site plan approval for Origin Bank. I'm sorry, I thought for a second there that I was under normal circumstances. Commissioner King, do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request, case twenty-six, four, seven, including the six stipulations by the planning staff.
All right, there's a motion to approve to include the six recommendations by the planning staff. Is there a second? Commissioner Gray?
I'll second.
There's a motion, second. Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigby?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes as well. The site plan is approved. And that brings us now to Bryan Development. It's case number two, six, four, nine. Bryan Development has filed a request for a variance from section two point six, point six, suburban multifamily. It's a structure height for the Behringer, and that's property located at six hundred Molly Bar Road. Ben, who's got this?
I do, thank you. As you can see in the case history, this, this site and this development has had a, you know, a history with the planning commission dating back to February of twenty nineteen. Most recently, it was a site plan amendment, a relatively minor amendment in September of twenty nineteen, just about a year ago. And in this instance, the applicant is now requesting a building height variance. This request, it allows the applicant to utilize already enclosed attic space on the top floor to create conditioned storage units for each of the dwelling units in the development. The change would not alter the design of the building, the elevations, or the architectural renderings previously approved in September of twenty nineteen. Additionally, the change would, it proposes men and women restrooms at both ends of the building to support the rooftop terraces that were previously considered. Storage units are common in multi, multi-unit developments. They provide residents with a place that they can store bulky items like, you know, decorations, home decor, et cetera, in a convenient place that's outside of the unit. Staff does agree that this is something that makes good sense in this type of development. I think placing them in conditioned space as proposed in this instance is problematic. There's no impediment to having a rooftop terrace. That's, it's defined in the land development code as an unenclosed rooftop. The proposal for the restrooms is problematic also because of the, just the floor which they're located. The applicant would like to install two sets of the restrooms so that residents will not have to travel to their room or another public facility located in the lobby. And in defense of the variance request, the application does state that providing bathrooms facilities in the attic adjacent to the proposed storage cubicles and adjacent to the previously approved rooftop terraces could almost be considered a necessity, but will certainly provide an added convenience. Initially, this could seem like a relatively minor request considering the building elevations can, will not be altered. But unfortunately for the applicant, the implication of granting this variance is that it would create a functioning fifth floor, as close to fifty percent of the area would be enclosed. I did send an email just a little while ago from, that I received from Paul Casonina with an exhibit that actually shows some calculations of that area that would be, would be conditioned, would be enclosed versus some additional attic space that is not air-conditioned. But that being said, this means that two, this would be two floors higher than what the typical suburban multifamily zoning standards dictate, which is no more than three stories in height. Since this development was granted a special exception for a fourth story, by being limited to age-restricted residents, it will technically exceed the standards by a floor. While the attic space in a single-family residence is not considered a floor, it is because it's not air-conditioned space. However, it is taken into consideration with the overall building height. Providing a bathroom on the terrace level would be, would be a nice convenience. They would not in any way be necessary since there is immediate elevator access to the floors below. No more than one or, I'm sorry, no more than one or one on each end unisex toilet would be entirely sufficient. But bathrooms are incidental to the primary concern with this request of turning an approved attic with two outdoor terraces or unenclosed rooftop space into conditioned storage units with multiple bathrooms serving two terraces with multiple amenities. As previous, as stated previously, this change means that approximately fifty percent of this level will be enclosed, which is actually not now that I have the numbers. It's based on what that exhibit indicates. There's some additional attic space that goes behind the storage units, if you see in that exhibit that Paul provided. But he could explain that in more detail if you have any questions on it. A variance requires evidence of a hardship that's not self-created, and it is for situations beyond the control of the applicant. Staff sees no legitimate evidence of any hardship, merely evidence of a desire to provide added amenities for the residents of this development. Perhaps the developer could identify design alternatives that would allow for storage facilities to be located in other areas of the building that would allow it to be code compliant. The recommendation by staff is the variance would not affect the overall design of the building, but the result of the approval would change the approved design and function of the building. Staff does not believe that there is a hardship to support the requested variance. And such variance would be likely to encourage other developers to consider such options as a means to increase interior space in this instance. However, even that could be problematic since the development has already been granted a special exception allowing an additional story. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the building variance, creating a fifth floor with interior storage spaces and restrooms. I did note that should the, the commission consider approving this requested variance, staff would request a condition that limits this variance to this specific request. Any change of use would require a new variance by the planning commission. And I know Paul Casonina's on the phone. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Now, I'm happy to take questions as well. This is Paul Casonina. I would like to just kind of, if I could, just real quick, some comments to follow Ben's introduction there. You know, I guess technically we're calling this a height variance, although it's a slight misnomer because the building is within code-required height, and we're not actually proposing to change anything about the exterior of the building compared to what was already approved, including the height. I think it really comes down to a question as to whether we're truly creating a fifth floor on the structure. And I guess that's the, kind of the crutch of the issue. And, you know, all due respect to Ben, I mean, we discuss this a lot over and over again for months, actually. Our client fully intends to build this project. It's a, you know, twenty million dollar project. It's something that can be a real quality addition to Oxford and a kind of a needed use they see here. And they really feel that this, this kind of added amenity with this storage is critical to the success of the project. And nowadays, with the climate we're in, trying to make a project like this move forward is, is that kind of, you know, it can ride the fence between whether it's something that is realistic and feasible or not. So every little thing kind of counts. But I did want to reference, and I'm happy to take questions here, but just before we get to that, I wanted to reference the drawing that Ben sent out that I sent him earlier today, because it sounds like there might have been some confusion about how much of the structure we're trying to use or how much of the unused attic space that already exists, which is currently just proposed to be a shell. And really, we're just proposing to use this as some conditioned, you know, climate-controlled storage. And again, my understanding is this could be used for storage, but not climate-controlled without any special request. But the fact that we're trying to utilize this for storage and control the climate, air conditioning, and heat it, is apparently a part of the problem. And also, we're asking for the permission to do bathrooms in that same attic space. But if you reference that drawing that I sent, the color-coded drawing, just for clarity, the light blue areas are the quarter-greenish areas. What we have labeled as unconditioned enclosed space, that is attic space. As you can see in little notes there, attic space on the top and bottom of that drawing. All of that is also unused open attic space. It's all enclosed, underroot, but it's, you know, it's accessible attic space. So we're not anywhere close to trying to utilize the entire attic space for, for storage or for bathrooms. It's about, it's about a third of the enclosed attic space that we're trying to use for the, the storage in the bathrooms. And so I want to make sure that was clear, because I think there was maybe, when we talked to Ben, might have been some confusion, at least on his part, about how much of the attic space we were actually trying to utilize for this. It may not take a lot of difference, but wanted to make sure that was clear. And also wanted to point out that, you know, Ben makes the reference to the number of bathrooms that were proposed. I mean, we do feel like this is a significant convenience, and the lack of these would be somewhat of a hardship to the people that live in these units, and they're going to be utilizing the rooftop terrace. But if we needed to reduce the number of bathrooms, I think our client would be happy to consider two unisex bathrooms, as Ben mentioned. Possibly even one unisex bathroom could be sufficient, if that makes a difference. But, but again, that color-coded drawing, we felt kind of helped to explain exactly what the various uses are on this upper level of the building, which includes the rooftop terrace that's above the fourth floor, and then also the attic space that's currently proposed to be unused. But no, I'm happy to take any questions if I could, or if there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
Paul, yeah, let me ask a quick one. So you could use, you could use the space up there currently for storage. I mean, it's set up to be like that without air conditioning. Is that right?
Well, Ben might want to confirm that, but that's my understanding.
Duncan, I think you're, if I understand your question right, you're, you're saying like, like an attic, like the attic in your house. Is that what you're saying? You could use that as, as storage that was up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
Attic, or, let me ask you this. If you wanted to have a little more circulation, would there be a way to have an open-air storage area? Kind of like you have on a beach condo, you know, just an outdoor area? And Paul, that may be a design question for you.
Right, well, you know, as far as the design goes, the architectural design, I'm not the architect, but I know that the, the building, you know, the open areas that are available or are intended to be used for, as that drawing shows, the combination of open roof deck area for, you know, rooftop terrace for the homeowners to use and their guests. And then we also have some open area that's intended to be for mechanical equipment and, you know, air conditioning units that would be sort of, you know, isolated from the roof deck, but still open area. But, you know, essentially, all those open areas are being utilized. And, and this is an attempt to really maximize the efficiency and the use of the building. I mean, you know, our client, I guess, could consider trying to put storage units in some other location, but it ultimately means, you know, losing residential units, which makes the economic viability of the project more cumbersome. And then, of course, we do have a lower level of the project that's mostly below ground. This is a four-level structure, but the fourth level, at the ground level, is primarily below ground, other than the face of it along the street you do see. But most of it's buried, and all of that is utilized as parking. I mean, we were able to make this site where you essentially see no parking on the site. There are almost no cars visible, other than three or four behind the building, but you really could not see from Molly Bar or from Washington in most cases. So, you know, almost all of the parking for the project is under the building in that subsurface garage, and really leaves no room for, for storage there. So, you know, this, it just seemed like the logical spot to put this. I mean, it was, it wasn't really, it wasn't at all an attempt to create a fifth floor or to try to create some usable, occupiable living space. It is simply partitioned off storage units to be used by homeowners. And again, I guess they could use this as unclimate-controlled storage space, but, you know, obviously, the preference would be to control that where they can store more valuable items or things that are more susceptible to temperature changes and humidity changes. And again, the bathrooms, it is a convenience and amenity. We feel like the lack of it is somewhat of a hardship. But, but we're perfectly willing to consider reducing the number of bathrooms, if that makes a difference.
Paul, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Judy. Okay, so when you come up the elevator and you get out of the elevator, before this was going to be conditioned storage space, when you stepped out of the elevator, were you out, you weren't outside?
That's right, yeah. That area that's under the darker blue, that's all under root. And I think, you know, I think the original plan would have contemplated conditioning the area where the elevators are to protect those from the weather, as well as the corridor.
So some of that was going to have to be conditioned. You just sort of, but that was in the area that we?
Yeah, Judy, you broke up a little bit there, but, but yes. I mean, I think the intent was for, you know, pedestrian way in that corridor and the elevator area to be conditioned. But originally, it was not contemplated to condition the rest of that attic space in that, in that specific area for the storage.
Okay.
Ben?
Yes.
If the height of the, if the height of the structure is not increasing, that, that's correct. And I'm just curious as to why it's designated as a variance for height?
If you remember, we had multiple developments that were constructed prior to our new land development code that used, used average-grade plane to, to build maybe five-story buildings. And so one of our ways to, to protect against that was to measure height in two ways, in feet and in, and floors. And, and so in this case, they're not requesting a height, a height variance in terms of feet, but in terms of floor, because they're limited, with that special exception that they received, they're limited to four.
I got you. I recall now. Thank you.
Which, Ben, I think begs the question of whether we're truly creating a fifth floor by this use. And again, all due respect to Ben, I think in our eyes, if we were proposing some commercial use like a restaurant, that would clearly be, you know, an occupable space that, that would change this discussion. If we were proposing dwelling units with bedrooms and kitchens, that would clearly be a different discussion. You know, in this case, this is something to be only utilized by the tenants of the development only for storage, and then bathroom facilities for them to use while they're on rooftop terrace. So I guess that really is the question. Is this truly a, you know, a habitable? So I guess that really is the question, is this truly a, you know, a habitable fifth floor that, that really should be considered a fifth floor, when it's really just enclosing attic space and sticking some ductwork up there from the AC unit? Or should it not? And that's, I guess, a question for the planning commission.
Paul, let me ask a quick question. You know, the, the rooftop, the roof deck, the red, that's intended to be used for just socially gathering for the tenants?
Exactly.
And restrooms are for their convenience?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I mean, you start talking about intentionally driving people to a certain area, and then outfitting it with plumbing, you know, for their convenience and leisure. I mean, I see what you're saying, does that constitute a floor? In my head, that does, if you're driving someone to a certain space. But that's just me.
Yeah. Can I jump in there?
Yeah.
I, I agree with Duncan, because if it's, it sounds like it's a dual-use. So that, you know, because just when I hear terrace and rooftop, you know, it, it seems like the framework is being laid to, over time, perhaps, you know, expand it, and, you know, and, so to me, it has all the hallmarks of an occupable floor, you know, a place that people are going to go up and, and have their drinks, and there's restaurants up there, and there might be storage up there too, right? So it sounds like it's very functional, but nonetheless, it still sounds like an occupable floor, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Well, and again, the rooftop terrace, that's an approved use, it's already approved, I mean, that will be utilized whether there's a bathroom up there or not. It's a matter of whether people have to send their kids down the elevator and go to the bathroom in their units or not. And so, so there's that.
Yeah, the rooftop terrace was already approved, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion or questions? I think JR may have dropped on. I don't see him anymore. Any questions for the engineer or the planning department? The motion, well, case, the case is for variance, is there any motion in regard to the request for variance?
Yes, Mr. Herron, I'll make a-
Go ahead, Duncan.
I'll make a recommendation to deny the variance.
All right, there's a motion to deny the variance request. Is there a second?
I'll make a motion to deny the variance request.
All right. Marvin, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that as a second. Duncan has made the motion.
All right, we should make, yep. Second, second Duncan's motion.
Okay. Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
No.
You, how do you vote? Commissioner Gray?
No. I mean, I, I mean, Commissioner-
Nice. So I assume that you vote yes on that motion, correct?
Yeah, I, Commissioner Freeman, I just, yeah, okay.
And Commissioner Freeman, just so I'm clear, your motion, well, excuse me, your vote was against the motion to deny, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm just making sure we're clear. Commissioner King?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Mur-
Yes.
I, I vote no. The motion to deny the variance carries with a, assuming that Commissioner Rigby is off, Commissioner Rigby? I think we drop, so we still have a quorum. It is a four to two to deny the variance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Riddell, I'm going, that brings us to your case. I assume that your case is last. Now, you are, we have a quorum, you're happy to drop out and then come back just to adjourn? Or you may simply drop out and we will see you in September?
See y'all in September.
Okay. That's what I thought you'd say.
Hi, Judy.
This is case number 2650, it's Judy and Chris Riddell. It's a request for variance from three, 3.2.8, it's a fence height, for property located at 1408 South Amar Boulevard.
All righty.
Robert, you got it?
I got it.
All right.
Right. Subject property is a residential three-quarter lot, located at the northwest intersection of South Amar and Old Taylor Road, with additional frontage on South 11th. This lot has frontage on all three streets, and the house faces South Amar. The applicant is requesting a fence, fence height variance of two feet to construct a six-foot-high wooden fence replacing an existing four-foot, about 150-foot-long segment of existing wire fencing around the front yards that parallel Old Taylor and South 11th. In June, a certificate of appropriateness was granted for both a pool and the requested fencing. The LEC states that fences that front, Eddie Pollock Street shall not be over four feet in height. But due to the nature of three-quarter lots that have three front yards and one side yard, the three front yard setbacks limit the possibility of owners to legitimately enclose a reasonable portion of their property, and concerned for privacy, the applicant wishes to construct a wooden fence higher than that is currently permitted in a front yard by the code. As the fence will be angled at the intersection of Old Taylor and South 11th, the construction of the fence should not impact driving visibility along the street. A variance request may be granted when special conditions exist that are peculiar to the land, or structures that do not apply to other lands or structures in the same district under the terms of the ordinance. By its nature, a corner lot deprives applicant of additional setback footage, commonly enjoyed by owners of interior lots. And recommendation of staff is to approve the two-foot fence height variance with the following condition, that the portion of fence facing Old Taylor Road and South 11th Street will be constructed in a manner that the smooth side of the fence will face public's view.
Well, the applicant has left. Any questions for the planning department? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on the requested variance.
Motion to approve, as the condition stated.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Freeman is there, second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The variance is approved with Commissioner Riddell being recused, and Commissioner Rigby being absent from the meeting for the second half. The variance is approved, and that was the last case. Thank you, Robert, welcome. We look forward to working with you and possibly seeing you in person sometime in 2022. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I'm giving it to Marvin. Commissioner King gets the motion, Commissioner Freeman got the second. All right, Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yeah.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. We are adjourned, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care. And that is my gavel.
That was your gavel, I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you, have a good evening, stay safe.
This meeting is no longer being recorded or transcribed.